Thank you, everyone, and welcome this morning to the Economic and Cultural Development Committee two thousand and twenty five, number six, today the twenty second of July. We're starting at eleven twenty four. Councillors in attendance, we've got councillor Madsen, Deputy Mayor Johnick, councillor Antonelli, councillor Martin and councillor Madden. We do have the mayor and councillor Doyle, who are seeking a leave of absence, so can I? Have a s- thank you councillor Martin, uh, Antonelli, second bike. I know, I was looking at you, but I was looking at councillor Martin's name, so you know when you, yeah, so thank you. Acknowledgement of country, Ipswich City. Oh, sorry, everyone for the mayor and councillor Doyle. No, councillor Tully's not part of this committee. Yeah, councillor Madden, how do you vote? Thank you, that's unanimous and carried. Sorry, acknowledgement of country, Ipswich City Council respects respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as a keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Thank you. I didn't get any declarations of interest and any matters on the agenda. No, business outstanding, we do have a matter on notice, which is the, which is the projector on the bulkhead in Nicholas Street precinct, that was raised by councillor Antonelli. Which the CEO did provide a response, councillor Antonelli, are you happy with the response? Is there any other further questions?
Yeah, just, just with respect to that, the only question I have is whether or not we actually have council approval for the use of that space as a, as an advertising board. Whether we have any council approval for that.
I'll refer to the CEO.
Because that would probably bring into question our ability to use it at all. I know we can use it for art and things like that, but that's different to advertising.
Thank you, through the chair, so within the constraints in the email that I did circulate, as long as we stay within those constraints, it's okay, but as also indicated, there is an intention to move to a development approval to make it abundantly clear and I guess fully explicate, you know, what the extent of advertising can be and on what parts within that precinct. But yeah, the advice I've had is that it is okay, as it currently is, but we would like to move to a development approval or an application for that, I should say.
I think that makes it then clear, particularly from a, we don't want to have any adverse comments that we're providing something that doesn't have formal approval, so I would like to be given the opportunity to make some comments in relation to that application process, I'm not sure, is it a co-accessible application, is it? It is, thank you.
Yeah, would be, yeah. No, no. Just looking at Brett to see whether he needs to clarify. Yeah. I'm happy to move on if that's okay, yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you very much, we'll, we'll move on with that, we'll move on to our next item. Part of our agenda, we've got supplementary, a supplementary report, but it's listed as item six, so I'll move through, we'll, we'll address that as item six and we'll go through the agenda as in numerical order, if that's okay. So we've got the, we'll go to the confirmation of minutes, so I'll take that as read, has anyone got questions of the minutes? If not, I'll move those minutes, do I have a second, thanks councillor Martin. Any discussion? No, I put that to the vote, all those in favour, thank you, that's unanimous and carried. Move to the officers' report, item two, which is the two thousand and twenty six Ipswich Show Holiday. This is just about gazetting the Ipswich Show Holiday for the fifteenth of May, two thousand and twenty six. Do we have any questions about that date for the Ipswich Show? No, thank you, I'll, I'll move that, do I have a second, thank you councillor Martin. Any discussion on that? No, I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour, that's unanimous and carried, thank you. Item three is the quarterly event sponsorship and ticket allocation report, April to June, two thousand and twenty five. Do we have any questions on, on the recommendations, which is A to C? No, I'll move those recommendations, do I have a second? Thank you councillor Antonelli. Any discussion from the floor? No, so good to see that we've got some sponsorship to Australian karting, which is great. So a little bit of diversity there, we've got AFL Queensland, which is to support their two thousand and twenty six AFL Queensland School Cup, their quarter final, so. Yeah, so I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour adopting that, that's unanimous and carried, thank you. Ips, we'll move on to item four, which is Ipswich Central revitalisation, six month report, July two thousand and twenty five. Do we have any questions of this report? No, I'll move that report, do I have a second? Thank you Deputy Mayor Johnick, discussion. I'd just like to acknowledge that we had sixteen new businesses that have opened in Ipswich Central since November two thousand and twenty four. We were also successful in securing three point eight million dollars from federal funding from federal member state, Shane Newman. We also were awarded an inaugural award of the Yarn Gerrel, Gel, Gel Centrepiece Award for Excellence in Community Led Placemaking in Ipswich Central, so that's a bit of a pat on the back for the officers. So thank you for everyone that was involved in leading our city to be the placemaker centrepiece. We also have seven new businesses due to the Welcome to Ipswich Central program. The second round of Frame the Door with eleven new businesses taking up that offer. We've also got the festoon lighting has been installed in crib and foot lane, which adds to the vibrancy of our city, I think, CEO. Yeah, and the revitalisation of Ipswich Central has strengthened the city's cultural and economic vibrancy. So, yeah, I think we're looking good in, in our Ipswich Central, so there's no other discussion, I'll put that. Item four to the, oh, sorry councillor Martin, so sorry, thank you.
Can I just ask, who's responsible for the replacement of pavers, like it seems every month there seems to be more work replacing faulty pavement, pavers through the road? And also the footpath, there's a lot of cracked pavers, just wondering who's responsible for that, are we paying for that or is that under warranty?
I'll get the CEO to address that, so through the chair. Do you mean in Nicholas Street precinct, councillor Martin? Yeah, so if it's in the precinct, within the designated ministerial exemption area, then that's council's responsibility, so over the last eighteen months, if not a little longer, we've been pursuing those that installed the road pavers. There were two different contractors that did those installations. So under warranty, we've been able to get some work done, but it has been a process of, yeah, repair and replacement of those pavers. I think there's been some unsuccessful attempts to use particular adhesives and with the weather, it's not, you know, not taken. So it's, it's been problematic, I, I agree. Happy to get Mr Hepburn up if you'd like any more detail, but it is something that we are constantly working on.
Yeah, right, I'm just disappointed if it's a costing code by council, because as we know, it's not even down five years and.
Yeah, warranty periods, sorry, through the chair have, have expired, so, yeah, we pursued that as far as we could, but, yeah. That's what we currently have.
Recent repair work is still, some of the recent repair work is still filed the pub test, it's still, it's just really disappointing, we're sitting at a cafe and hear dun 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 with all those tiles when cars go down the street. And even walking up Nicholas Street, there's a number of cracked and broken pavers and, and Tolma Place itself, the grouting's given away in a lot of places. And also just while we're on, well, while I'm talking about that, where the water play area is, there's a section of grass, it pretty well always just dirt. By virtue of the fact it's in the shade, just like to potentially see a recommendation that be paved or have sort of a different surface and grass, which obviously isn't coping in no sunlight.
Chair, I'm happy to take an action to provide an operational update on the rectification of the pavers and on that section of grass, I know the one that you mean, and there, there is an alternative treatment proposed there that I can provide an update on.
You happy with that, Miss councillor Martin?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm calling you Mr Martin, councillor Martin, councillor Antonelli.
Yes, thank you Chair, just in relation to the precinct, I'm starting to get a few calls of concerns just regarding the, I guess, how do I put this, people are finding that the colours of the pavers, particularly on the road edges, is a bit of an issue. Stepping down and those sorts of things, the step down is a bit, it might be people with eyesight issues, vision impaired and the like, but also, so I'm wondering whether or not, and I remember years ago, we had to, under the previous mall arrangement, we sought advice by people with equitable, for equitable access, to see whether there were any particular problems. We may need to have a look and see if we need to make some design changes or, or the like to improve that visibility. The other one is actually those, those block seats that are in the area in front of the council building and the, where gelatissimo and nautical bowls are. Again, particularly during the daytime when the lights aren't on them, some people are walking into them, not seeing them. So I'm just wondering whether or not we need to get someone to have a look and see if we have a liability issue there.
Do you, are you talking about the square, the cement? Yeah, I must say on the weekend, I did notice somebody was walking, and it seems to be like the colour of the seat is
The same as the ground.
As the ground, and I did see somebody, I was standing there, somebody walked past me, went doink straight into it, and I was like, oh. So I know it's happened right in front of me, so I'm thinking, shall we put it in?
I know at night.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry Chair.
No, can, go.
I know at night that the, with the lights, it's, it does stand out a little bit more, but during the daytime.
Yeah, this was in the daytime as well, when I witnessed what you were just trying to explain just then, so CEO, will you add, will it be the whole? Of you, yeah, so you're happy with that, CEO?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll speak to the CEO about the specifics of the complaints I've received, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? No, I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour of adopting that, thank you, that's unanimous and carried. So we'll go to item five, which is the Nicholas Street precinct, June two thousand and twenty five Nicholas Street precinct project control group. We did get an update through a briefing, anyone got any questions? We do have some confidential matters in this, has anyone got questions?
The only question I have is, this is the final report from the project control group, is it?
Because it's going.
Not that I'm aware of, yeah.
Oh, sorry, am I referring to the, the other group that, as per the previous, the finance meeting where we, the management, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no.
So this is a, this is an internal, lots of all the.
The project control group that our chair will continue, notwithstanding that we are looking to engage a precinct management provider. Yeah, that won't change.
Yeah.
Will they potentially still, they'll come in and report through this PCG report, do you think?
They'll provide reports, that'll go to the, the relevant council director, through to the PCG.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, all right, thank you. There's no more questions, I'll move, are you right councillor Antonelli? Okay, I'll move that report, have I got a second for that one? Thank you Deputy Mayor Johnick, discussion. No, I'll put that to the vote, all those in favour, that's unanimous and carried, thank you. So we'll go back now to item six, which is at the front of the agenda, which is the supplementary report, which is the response to the notice of motion, a new synthetic athletics track for Ipswich. So do we have any questions for any of your relevant officers? Councillor Martin, no.
Well, it wasn't a question, it was, I wanted to move another motion in the recommendation.
I can hear your motion, yep. Well, we'll move all of those and then we can.
You can, you can move the motion now if you like.
Okay.
We haven't moved the motion yet, so you can move it at the same time.
Well, we'll move it and then we'll go into the motion for councillor Martin, so I'll move those, do I have a second? Councillor Madden, thank you, discussion.
Chair, if I might, noting that councillor Martin has indicated that he'd like to make a separate motion, I just, general managers highlighted with me, so if I could highlight with the committee that the, the recommendation B, as, as you'd be aware, does already state that council will continue the process of site identification and advocacy, so it's, the whole purpose here is to, per the original notice of motion that was put forward by councillor Doyle is to lead to advocacy for funding, so I'm just, yeah, being reminded that we would need some, some numbers in terms of how much we're seeking for advocacy purposes. So it is in train, but certainly if you'd like to strengthen it, I'll leave it to the, the chair and the committee.
Sorry councillor Martin, yeah, there is a, did you want to put any extra? Because it is in train, we are, as the CEO said. Was yours much different to B?
Wasn't a whole lot different, just in terms of government funding. It's just hard to convey the disappointment our city has generally in terms of seven point one billion dollars spent for the Olympics, we're not getting anything. And yet again, we're being overlooked. It's kind of hard to move a motion expressing disappointment and wanting to see good outcomes for our city. I understand what that's saying, possibly like to strengthen it more by virtue of the fact of actual streams through state and federal government, but understand the recommendation and what it is, and also understand that we need, I'd say, nail down a proposed site before we can actually do costings to see how much it's going to cost before we actually approach relevant government departments. Me personally, I also would like to see our council at some stage thinking outside the box, I would love private partnerships. If somebody wanted to have naming rights on something, like say for example, we have some, yeah, we have some wealthy business people in our community. If they wanted to have naming rights, as most of our football stadiums are around the country, I'd certainly be open to that and would actually welcome that.
Yeah, thanks councillor Martin. I do note that in councillor Doyle's original motion, she does state that, you know, we need to do an advocacy campaign to attract state and Commonwealth funding, so she is asking for it in the beginning. So will that suffice councillor Martin? It's going to go through advocacy, so when we advocate, we will be obviously adding it to our plan to advocate to state and federal, is that, will that suffice?
I can jump in, like partly what councillor Martin's just said is that we should also be looking for like third party funding from agencies which aren't the state or federal government, like what sort of partnerships are out there to potentially operate a facility? Or if any philanthropists want to open up their chequebook.
Perhaps I could move an amendment, I think I understand what councillor Martin was headed for, and it's, it's related to the report from the Sporting Advocacy Committee, and they use the phrase funding pathways, but they didn't provide any details. So I'd like to add item D. D, it'd be D, C? Okay, I will see, that's, that's fine, Chair. It'll be C, and the motion would be that the Ipswich City, that the funding, possible funding pathways be outlined. Simple as that, I mean, that could encompass, might be a late application with regard to Olympic funding, it might be something to do with a grant we know that's coming up from the federal government, it might be advocating with the state and federal members. But it, it was a phrase used in that report, so clearly the council officer, he used that phrase, funding pathways, so plural. So I'd just like to add that as a motion.
Yeah, thank you councillor Madden, I think councillor Doyle has always been banging on about those grant applications as well, knowing when stuff is, is happening, so I think this one will be, yeah.
That's it, that's it, and councillor Martin's going to second it.
Yeah.
Yes, thanks Vicky, please, yeah, to link the two reports, and Vicky, what's the proper title of that report?
What are you looking for councillor Madden? I think, I think the Chair, the councillor Madden's looking, referring to the minutes, I believe, of the Sport and Recreation Advisory Committee, is that correct?
Yep, yes.
And as referred to in that report, but no details were provided, and I was interested to see that it was plural, funding pathways. And pathways is an unusual term, it doesn't encompass just applying for a grant. It might be advocacy, could, but it was clearly plural, and I think that's good that that was in that advisory committee, but I think it's worthy of being dealt with before this committee, okay?
Is it Madden, not Madsen? Madden, not Madsen? Yeah. Yeah. The sport, sports and.
Advisory Committee. So it was item four of the Community and Sport Committee today.
Just trying to get the words right councillor Madden. So it's a retrospective reference, so it's outlined that the possible funding pathways as outlined in the report.
She's confused.
I should add, that was through you Chair, that was a pretty brief sort of verbal update of the Sport and Recreation Advisory Committee, just to let everyone know that this was coming in the pipeline.
Wasn't fully outlined before the advisory committee, that could be outlined with the motion being discussed today.
How about, what about if I propose a change up to just say that council officers provide advice on
Possible funding pathways?
The broad range or the possible funding pathways.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, full stop, yeah. So council officers provide advice as to the broad range of possible funding
Pathways.
Pathway options, full stop.
Yep.
That's it, Vicky, thank you, I'm fine with that, second to you, can I have that?
Delete the S after pathway, Vicky. Thank you. We can do work with that.
We can work with that, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, where'd it go? Councillor, oh, councillor Martin, you happy with C? Yep. All right, so we'll go back to moving A, B and C as a block. Um, councillor Madden, did you want to move the lot? Yep, yep, uh, second. Thanks councillor Martin. Um, any further discussion on it? No?
Wanted to foreshadow something. I don't want to propose any, uh, further amendments or anything, but, um, uh, when the point sort of arrives, when we have an identified place that we think we should push for funding, I think if that ends up ultimately being a council facility, um, my assumption would be that then the council was probably in a position where we're operating it. Um, so once that happens, um, um, I personally believe we're going to need a pretty substantial undertaking um, to understand how we're going to operate it. Um, we would potentially need to expand the size of our community and sport branch or look at other public-private models. Um, and it's, it's really vital that we set it up with a model similar to the North Ipswich Reserve, that we have a plan to at least recoup partial or ideally full funding for what the maintenance and activation costs are going to be for a facility of this nature. That's not to say that I'm against the project in any way, but, um, if we really do begin to go down a path where we're going to own a facility of this kind, like, um, it's a huge sort of undertaking behind the scenes that would be in addition to what the council currently operates. I'm open to the conversation, um, but, um, that will come with significant financial cost, um, so we need to really, really, um, make sure that we can come up with any and all opportunities to get the right people involved in that project. Because operating a facility is much harder than building one of, uh, this nature.
Oh, I totally agree with, especially with stadiums around, um, like stadium Queensland, operating stadiums, they don't, they don't make a dollar from them, so I totally agree with you councillor Madsen. Um, so when that, that, um, opportunity arises, we'll, we'll flag that and make sure that we've, uh, scoping the, the whole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if I may, like, I think it, it's part of the awkward balancing act too, if, if other proposals come forward where we're not operating it, we actually need to consider if they're in a better position to be the operator.
Hmm.
Um, so like, I'm happy to lean on people from the athletics, I guess, industry and the, the professionals that work in athletics. I really need to know what they think is possible and what's viable, because I'm, I'm not a track athlete, I'm not a track coach or anything like that, I'm I really don't understand that area, so it's a, it's a huge risk area for me, where there's a lot of information I need to to learn, uh, to be, feel comfortable about what we ultimately do there.
Yeah, no, going to the, um, the, um, the professionals is always a good, a good way, so. I'll, uh, with that said, I'll put that to the vote. Um, all those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Move on to, uh, matters arising, which I have none. Um, questions on, um, uh, general business, um, I've got two, um, uh, certificates to present to you, CEO, I've just left them on my desk, but I'll get them to you. Um, Ipswich Show Society, we've got a appreciation certificate from the, the show society um, for our support in another great, um, show. And then also the Ipswich, uh, Region Chamber of Commerce Expo, Business Expo, um, as their major sponsor. They had a really good show as well, uh, lots of new businesses, lots of, um, uh, interaction and, um, yeah, it was a, it was a good expo. I was, I was there and, um, yes, spoke to many of the, um, stall holders, so, yeah.
Thank you Chair, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so that comes to a conclusion of the, the meeting. I'll talk to councillor Madden, are you happy? When, shall we go for a break, or do you want to ten-minute break? Okay. Okay. Yeah, we, we need the ten, we need the ten minutes. So do you want to go ten or go for lunch and get, come back at twelve?
Uh, whatever you'd like Chair.
Okay, so we'll get, we'll come back at, um, four, twelve oh four, thank you. Meeting closed.